The first order of business is a pledge of allegiance that asks everyone to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I would just like to make note that we had the passing of one of our music teachers that was here for many, many years. Her name, excuse me, was Nikna Lennox of Cumberland. She was ninety years old when she passed away. She had founded the Cumberland Clef Singers, in which we all know today, so renowned for what they're doing here. And we just wanted to make note that, you know, she had passed away, and there was something in the Valley Breeze today about it. And if you wanted to make a donation, her memory, they're asking that you mail checks to the Cumberland High School Choral Department at 2600 Menden Road in Cumberland. So, just wanted to point that out. So if we could have just a moment of silence for her. All right, thank you. All right, so next order of business is the approval of our agenda. You had a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
By Mr. Hess, second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it seven to zero. Next is the consent agenda for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 11, 2019, the special meeting of July 18, 2019, the approval of the minutes from the executive session of July 18, 2019, the enrollment report from August 1, 2019, the school police report from July 1, 2019, and the residency-truancy report from August 1, 2019. Anyone have any questions in regards to those items?
No.
Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Salvatore makes a motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it seven to zero. Next is a report out of the executive session meeting held today, August 8, 2019. There were no votes taken in the executive session tonight. I need a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Hess, second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it seven to zero. Thank you. All right, Mr. Superintendent, you have some recognitions.
There was one thing that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school committee. I don't know if you were aware of this, but you may recall that every year, there is a competition for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. They do pennies for patients. One hundred forty-nine schools in the state participate in the competition. And, you know, Cumberland has really made it fun. And I think the, like at the high school, they have teachers and classrooms that compete with one another, and they're able to generate a lot of money. As I mentioned, there are one hundred forty-nine schools in the state that participate, and I am pleased to announce that out of all one hundred forty-nine schools, they identified the top twenty schools in the state. The number-one school for collecting money for the Lymphoma and Leukemia Society was Community Elementary School, number one. They collected thirteen thousand thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. The next closest school was Davisville Middle School. They collected six thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. So there is a, almost a seven-thousand-dollar difference between what community school collected and the next closest school. We also had two other schools in the top twenty. Garvin Memorial Elementary School, which is probably half the size of Community, they collected three thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. And Cumberland High School collected three thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. So of the top twenty schools in the state for this fundraising event, three of them were from Cumberland. And the school, and specifically the class, that generates the most money gets to have a meal provided by the Olive Garden. So I was invited to Community School, and it was Christina Kernick's class, fifth-grade class, that raised the money. There was some student in there that was used technology, and, I mean, I think he raised thousands of dollars himself. So the students in Christina Kernick's class were treated to a really nice pasta lunch by the Olive Garden. And the woman who, you know, she is high-energy, woman who organizes this fundraising event, is Deborah Waterson, and she says, "Dear amazing and wonderful pennies, coordinators, students, speakers, and honored heroes, thank you, thank you, thank you." And the one hundred forty-nine schools in the state were able to raise, they're still, I guess, collecting some money, but they were able to raise two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. So that's pretty impressive. So congratulations to Community School, Cumberland High School, and Garvin Elementary School, three schools in the top twenty, pretty impressive. They make it a lot of fun, and good for them for generating funds for a worthwhile cause. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next is a report of standing committees, item number eight, payment of bills, Mr. Hess.
Okay, so fiscal did meet this evening, and we did pay bills, both the fiscal year nineteen as well as twenty. So fiscal year nineteen, six hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Fiscal year twenty, six hundred and eighteen thousand ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents, for a total of one million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. This passed on a two-to-zero vote upstairs, and I would move passage here as well.
Mr. Hess moves passage of payment of the bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it, payment of bills. Thank you. Next is fiscal management subcommittee update.
Okay, so in addition to paying the bills, we had a brief discussion about, we're still closing out the fiscal year nineteen budget, but things look like they'll end positively there. One note that we did have is that prior to this summer, we did have a profit-sharing and utility-sharing agreement with BVP with regard to our food service, because they use Sedexo, the same service that we use. As a result of that, because they used our facilities, and there was an increase in the number of students that were participating in the meal plans with BVP's headcount, we saw some additional revenue. BVP has decided to go out on their own for food service, and they are not going to be using Sedexo or our services anymore. As a result of that, we'll see roughly a hundred thousand dollar loss in revenue and profit-sharing with Sedexo. So that's an unfortunate result of BVP's decision to go out on their own for food service.
Reduction.
Reduction, I suppose. And other than that, it was a relatively quiet meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. I just want to make note for the public that it's not the district losing a hundred thousand dollars. All the money from food services goes into a segregated account that we use to buy equipment, do maintenance, and so forth. So it'll be just less money down the road for those items, but it's not like it's coming a hundred thousand right off our budget. So I just want to make note of that. Thank you. Next is policy and procedures subcommittee update, Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, policy did meet on Tuesday night. We discussed a few items. A couple were just what we would call housekeeping, which was the affirmative action plan and the use of school facilities. I'll discuss those a little more in detail when we go to vote on those. The other main discussion was, of course, on field trips, what the new advisory opinion of the commissioner, the effect that the commissioner's ruling has on our field trips, our policies, which we will be working on and present a full, an amended policy in two weeks, with any luck, so that the schools, the parents, the teachers, all have clear guidance when school starts. It is very important to note that this is what our legal opinion has been. This is what the legal opinion of other districts has been. It is something that we are really bound to adhere to the state law, and that's what we are doing. We are working to ensure that a lot of these trips, at least at the elementary level and some of the day trips, can go forward, as well as sports trips, arts trips, academic clubs, all those trips, we're going to figure all that out. But we have to do this portion first, and we are also going to have a much larger discussion, which we also discussed, around fundraising, crowdsourcing, which is all going to be part of the equation. What was it that you wanted me to mention? That was it. And, am I forgetting anything, ladies? What do you got? No?
In two weeks.
Yes, in two weeks, we're going to have a new policy, a couple of policies.
So if people are interested?
Yeah, if people are interested, come on out. I believe it's the twentieth is the next policy meeting? And, oh, I know what I wanted to mention. I will be hopefully meeting with the PTO presidents or some of their board members to kind of discuss what their role could be, either inside or outside of the school day. So hopefully that'll get going in the next week or two.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Anyone have any questions, room, about this? All right, thank you. Next is achievement and communications subcommittee update, Mrs. Friedman.
Okay, so this subcommittee met on Tuesday night as well, and we had one primary agenda item, which was to discuss the elementary school schedule and looking, continuing our discussion around how we incorporate music, art, STEM into an already-packed day at the elementary school level. So we will be continuing to discuss this item throughout this year and be looking to make changes into the next school year, 2020 to 2021. And we will be, we talked about other future topics to discuss at achievement meetings, high school achievement, achievement-related budget items, the elementary school schedule, of course, things like RICAS results and individual school reports by RIDE. So we'll be scheduling all of those over the course of the next, you know, next several months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Friedman. Next is comments from the public. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to the school committee, make a comment, please come to the podium. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to public hearings. We have item number, reading of amended policies, number one, G1 affirmative action plan, Mr. Fiorello.
I would just ask that G1 affirmative action plan be read into the record, and I would ask that K2, the use of school facilities, also be read into the record. I-10, I-6, J-15, no action were taken on those the other night, so there is no need to read those into the record.
Mr. Fiorello asked that the G1 affirmative action plan and the K2 use of school facilities be read into the record. Any objection? Hearing none, thank you. Next is public comment again in regards to any of these readings. Hearing none, okay, we will move on again. Next is new business, discussion and a vote to approve the resignation of school committee member Stephen Hess from the Cumberland Public Schools renovation building committee. I had brought this up with Mr. Hess in regards to it. I didn't want to have a building committee member get so invested and then, like Mr. Hess would be, and then he would leave and a new person come in. So Mr. Hess has graciously, graciously, a lot, you know, stepped down from the building committee for the schools, and we're going to appoint Mr. Fiorello to that committee so there'll be some continuity in regards to the work going on there. So I need a motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Hess from the building committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mrs. Friedman.
Second.
Second by?
Waters.
Mrs. Waters. Mr. Hess, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, so the reason I'm doing this, obviously, for those who don't know, is my family has already moved to Florida, and I will be following them once my house sells. So my intention is to stay on the committee until I'm either no longer able to fulfill my duties or no longer a resident of the town. But in the interest of continuity, the projects that the building committee is going to take up will far exceed my tenure. I do think it makes sense to have a school committee member who's going to be around longer term than I am follow up on that. So I appreciate Mr. Fiorello stepping up, and thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Next is discussion and a vote to appoint school committee member Mark Fiorello to the Cumberland Public Schools renovation building committee. So Mark is going to step up. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Friedman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Thank you. Next is, we have a discussion and a vote to approve a town council resolution, number R-1958, which is the contract with Colliers International for services as the owner's project manager relative to the voter's eighty-three-million-dollar bond for school improvements in an amount not to exceed one million seven hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. The mayor and I have reached an agreement how this will work, and so whatever the building committee approves for projects going forward, the school committee will vote on them as well, and then it goes to the town council. So the town council has already voted to approve Colliers as the project manager. The mayor wants the town, the school committee to also have a positive vote on that as well. So Colliers has been interviewed by the building committee already. They were interviewed by our professional, school department professional staff as well, and they were selected as the top bidder for us. And then they did the turn, took a turn with the building committee. They approved it as well. So I need a motion to approve the contract with Colliers for the amount of one million seven hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any discussion, anyone have any questions in regards to that one? So it's just, it's not really, it's a housekeeping item right now. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Thank you. Next is discussion and a vote to approve authorization to administer the 2020 Rhode Island Student Survey. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a survey that we do every year. We ask for your approval. Students in grades eight through ten are asked to take the survey. It is voluntary. Students also know that, no student is identified at all in any way, and we've gained some valuable information from the survey. And one of the things that we do as a leadership team is we, once we get the results, we are able to fine-tune our approach to supporting students in the areas of concern. One really good example would be, as you all know, vaping is an issue that has skyrocketed over the last several years, and the Cumberland Prevention Coalition, who really is responsible for administering the survey, they do things like provide parents with that program that has been developed called Hidden in Plain Sight. So they're actively involved in that, and we're able to share the results with all of our mental health people. We meet, just for your information, we, meaning the high school principal, both principals of the middle schools, and the student assistance counselor, which is a grant-funded position. We meet at least quarterly, have conversations about the data that is provided to us through this survey, and I would hope that you would continue the support of providing this survey. And it's done, I believe it's done, I have this information somewhere, but I believe it's done in the, in this late winter and spring, January to May. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, anyone have any questions for the superintendent about the survey? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mrs. Waters, second by Mr. Salvatore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next is discussion and a vote to approve the employment contract for the confidential administrative assistant to the director of special services. Mr. Hess, want to take this one?
Sure. So we discussed this upstairs in fiscal. This is a budgeted position. This will be filling a position that's being vacated by someone. This passed upstairs on a two-to-zero vote. I would move passage here as well.
Mr. Hess moves passage of the employment contract for the confidential administration assistant to the director of special services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. All right, next is discussion and a vote to approve the appointment of the confidential administrative assistant to the director of special services. That was heard upstairs. The name of the candidate that they would like to appoint is Melanie Santos. So she would be taking the job as the confidential secretary. And the salary is budgeted, it's actually a little bit less than it was the previous one. So I need a motion to approve the appointment of Melanie Santos as the?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Waters?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. All right, next is discussion and a vote to approve the amended policies, G1 affirmative action plan, Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, as I said, this is a housekeeping measure. We have to update this plan every, we review and update it every year if necessary. This year, there was a change of the administrator at the state level, so that information had to be reflected in our policy. That is the only change in affirmative action. So I would recommend passage of G1.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to pass G1 as amended, second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Next is K2, use of school facilities, Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, as we've crossed into the new fiscal year, the custodial rate on use of, and this policy has changed, it has gone from, let me get my spectacles, thirty-four twenty-nine to thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents per hour. That is what groups will be asked to pay if necessary. The other change, which I have to thank Mr. DeMonica for catching, is the address of the police station has changed, so that has been reflected as well. So I would make a motion to approve use of school facilities, K2.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve K2 use of school facilities as amended.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters and Mr. Hess. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Next is item number H, discussion and a vote to approve resolution SCPR-8 2019-07, cleaning of ductwork at the middle schools, J.J. McCourt and North Cumberland Middle School. Mr. Hess.
Okay, so we took this up in fiscal. The business manager informed us that it has been some number of years since the ducts were cleaned. In the interest of maintaining the health of both the HVAC system as well as the people in the buildings, we are going to go ahead and clean the ductwork throughout these buildings. This is something that should be done on a regular basis. The total cost for this for both buildings is twenty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and this passed upstairs on a two-to-zero vote, and I would move passage here as well.
Mr. Hess moves passage of SCPR-8 2019-07. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Next is personal recommendations. Why don't we take the resignations of the group, and we'll take the leave of absences of the group as well?
Absolutely. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on three resignations. Erin Gardner, special educator at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School, effective July 24th, 2019. Thomas Robinson, paraprofessional in the success ALP classroom at Joseph McCourt Middle School, effective July 30th, 2019. And Melanie Santos, special services clerk at Cumberland High School, effective August 20th, 2019.
So I need a motion to accept the three resignations?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. Hess to accept the three resignations, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have that, seven to zero. Next is leave of absences.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee on two unpaid leaves of absence. Sarah Godino, grade six math teacher at Joseph McCourt Middle School for the 2019-20 school year. And Kiara Tracy, grade three teacher at Community School with an anticipated start date of October 15th, 2019, through the end of the 2019-20 school year.
Great, thank you. We have two leave of absences. I need a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. Hess to accept.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Next is appointments.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of one current employee, Nellie Norman, early childhood coordinator at Ashton Preschool Center with an effective date of August 5th, 2019.
We have a motion, we need a motion for the current employee, Nellie Norman. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mrs. Bernado. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Now it's new employees, thank you.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of ten new employees. Cynthia Alexander, library media specialist at Cumberland High School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019. Abigail Brunel, grade six math teacher, one year only, at Joseph McCourt Middle School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019. Tamar Shobanyan, grade seven science teacher at Joseph McCourt Middle School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019. Chelsea Maldonado Morales, kindergarten teacher at Cumberland Hill School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019. Asia Macaron, special services clerk at Cumberland High School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019. Eva Mancon, .8 social studies teacher at North Cumberland Middle School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019. Christine Medici, building secretary at Joseph McCourt Middle School with an effective date of August 13th, 2019. Jamie Miller, ELA essentials teacher at North Cumberland Middle School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019. Sylvia Stippich, EL teacher at Joseph McCourt Middle School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019. And Tracy Walton, clerical assistant at, excuse me, tech at Joseph McCourt Middle School with an effective date of August 28th, 2019.
We have ten new employees for the district. I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Waters.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion, no needies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Next is the fall coaches.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointments of twenty coaches. At the high school, cheerleading, Rachel Powell. Boys cross-country, Carrie Carpenter. Girls cross-country, Vanessa Malloy. Football, Joseph Lima. Assistant football coach, Derek D'Souza. JV football coach, Gabriel Gonzalez. JV assistant football coach, William Hogan. Freshman football, Jonathan Shakar. Boys soccer, Justin Resendez. Boys JV soccer, Steve Gorman. Girls soccer, John Hoxsey. Girls JV soccer, Kara Gorman. Girls tennis, Brandon Hanaway. Volleyball, David DeJesus. At the middle schools, McCourt cross-country, Christopher Fernandez. North Cumberland Middle School cross-country, Sean Connolly. Boys soccer at McCourt Middle School, Scott Winslow. Boys soccer at North Cumberland Middle School, Ron Leclerc. Girls soccer at McCourt Middle School, Alyssa McCourt. And girls soccer at North Cumberland Middle School, Sam Vazale.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve these fall coaches. Motion to approve by Mrs. Bernado.
Second.
By Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Dre.
Thank you.
All right, next is school committee comments, school liaison reports, anyone? All right, so, Mr. Hess?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate and expand on Mr. Fiorello's comments with regard to the field trip policy. I know a number of people are unhappy with it, but the school committee is the end of the line when it comes to anything with regard to federal or state. federal or state laws and statutes. We have to implement what laws get passed. We don't have a choice in the matter. It is the considered professional legal opinion of people who have actually passed the bar that our previous policy was illegal as interpreted by RIDE. And if you read Rhode Island general law that they cite from a layman's standpoint, that certainly seems to be the case. It's unfortunate. I don't think any one of us up here is happy with the end result of this, but we all stood up here in November, raised our right hands and sworn oath to uphold and abide by Rhode Island law. And to the best of our understanding from the people who are legal experts in the matter, Rhode Island general law prevents us from charging for field trips the way that we used to. So we had no choice in the matter but to cancel the existing field trips. The way to approach this problem, and I do believe it's a problem, I agree with everyone, I think it's ridiculous, but it's the law. The way to approach this is to reach out to the General Assembly and have them change the law. That's the way this country works. We operate on the rule of law. We don't get to choose which laws we abide by. If we disagree with them, we change them. We don't just ignore them. Same thing that we do with policies. If we don't agree with them, we get them changed so that they reflect our values and our belief system. So everyone out there that's angry with us, I get it. I'm angry with the ruling as well, but what we did was vote to abide by the law. And if anybody else wants to run for the school committee on the basis of only abiding by laws they agree with, by all means. But I took an oath to abide by and enforce the laws of Rhode Island. I take that oath seriously. That's why I voted in favor of it. Personally, I think it's reprehensible that we're in this position. I think it's a disservice to the students. I think it has the complete opposite effect that the law was intended to have some sort of equality and ensure that people of lesser means had access to things so that it's not an us versus them sort of situation. But unfortunately, the outgoing commissioner and his legal team, as well as precedents from previous commissioners based on the opinion, said that the way that we were doing things was illegal. That's it. It's cut and dry. Everyone wants to apply their own personal views on it, and that's fine, but the General Assembly is the one that needs to fix this. We can't. We don't set laws here. We pass policies that abide by them. Mr. Fiorello spent a great amount of time adjusting our policies to reflect changes in names, changes in addresses. That's what we do. We're at the end of the line. People need to address this with the people further up the line. Address it with RIDE. They're the ones that passed this ruling and interpreted the law. They're the ones that tell us what we need to do. And pass it and deal with the General Assembly who actually wrote the law. But those are the people that are angry at us for implementing that. What you're saying is you're angry at us for passing a policy to abide by the law. I find that problematic. I disagree with the law, but I still abide by it. So I would implore everyone that is angry about this situation, reach out to the General Assembly. Reach out to your senators, reach out to your representatives, reach out to RIDE, reach out to the governor. They will change the law if you tell them you want it changed. But going at it from the school committees, we're not the ones with the power to change it. We're the ones that have to implement it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Anyone else? Mr. Fiorello?
I just want to clarify one thing. Some people have, are under the belief that this is a new law that the General Assembly made. It is not. This is a very old law. How far back does this law go?
I don't know. I mean, the, what I can...
Nobody alive is actually still, I mean, was responsible.
What I can say is that the commissioner has interpreted that law. So that law's, those laws, actually, there are multiple laws that there were cited. So the commissioner has interpreted the laws that were passed by the General Assembly.
And the legislature, I understand, has given RIDE pretty much free rein over education policy.
So the commissioner's opinions are given great weight in deference, as any administrative agency's heads, the head of any administrative agency's opinions on the law is given great weight in deference. So will, well, hers, but at the time, it was his.
Also, I've spent some time speaking to other school committee members from other towns, as well as teachers from other towns, and pretty much everyone is going through what we are going through. There are a couple of towns who had recently updated their policies within the past year, and their legal teams have said that their policies are actually in accordance with the law. Many others are not, and they're scrambling to figure it all out. And some towns, quite honestly, are waiting to see what we do and East Greenwich and a couple of other towns are doing.
Anyone else? All right, so I just got one housekeeping item here. I would ask that all the school committee members, if they can be here for the September 12 meeting, which is our regular meeting. We're going to have Torato and Colliers, who are the people coming up with the plan for the $83 million bond. They're going to make a presentation to the school committee at that night about what proposals we should do, whether the, there was a meeting there today as well. Does the school committee redistrict the schools, the schools, community, Gov and BF down the road? They're coming up with a five-year plan for the schools' districts, and when they start doing this at the elementaries, every elementary school will close for a year. So you need to come on the 12th for that presentation, and we're looking to vote on the 19th to give guidance, which would be a special meeting on the 19th with the building committee of the town council as well in regards to what plan we're going to accept and have the architects start to do the drawings. We're looking to go to RIDE in February for a submittal, and so we need to get the ball rolling here. There's been many weekly meetings going on, you know, dealing with the minutia of, you know, what we should be doing here at the moment, and they're almost ready to bring it to us. On the 12th and the 19th, the public is going to be invited to come because everything we do is going to affect them. If it's redistricting that we do, we do it. If we don't do it that way, then what will the plan be down the road? So they're going to get the bus routes out to start looking at them, what would happen if we did do this. As we know, community is the biggest school in the district versus the other smaller ones, and, you know, is it within our willpower to take 100 kids or 60 kids out of a community to lower that and bring them, you know, to other schools to even the load out, so to speak. But, you know, all the schools are going to get work. Community, a new cafeteria is on par. Ashton could get eight to 10 new classrooms. It depends on what we do. The community will depend on Ashton. So, you know, please mark it in your calendar for those two dates. You know, the 19th is a special one because we have to give them a vote. Okay? So other than that, if you have any questions about what's been going on in these meetings, I can show you some drawings, what they've put out there so far to give us all ideas of what they're going to do. Okay? All right, so hearing no other comments from the school committee. Mr. Superintendent, do we have anything for executive session?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
We do not. I need a motion to adjourn? Motion adjourned by Mr. Hess, second by Mrs. Waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven to zero. Thank you.